All right, I'll call the order. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in Christ.
All right, we'll call Chris Block. Haley?
Here.
Bessie?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Deb Wallace? All right, Eileen, we will kick it off to you.
All right, everyone has the handouts?
Yes.
Okay. So, the handouts that I sent out are much more comprehensive than what we have to cover tonight. And tonight, I'm simply covering the part of the procedures and policies that need to be covered for the confidentiality, the required confidentiality as part of your policy AC and your policy GCFB that your district has adopted. These policies require a training in confidentiality and a training reviewing the hiring requirements and guidelines for the hiring of your interim superintendent schools. We do have three applications, completed applications in our office that have arrived. So, as the ad said, until a suitable candidate is found, after this training tonight, those who are participating and those who agree to sign the confidentiality agreement then can move forward and can go ahead and conduct the interviews. And once again, let me remind you that what happened is that when you are ready to receive the applications, I will confirm that you have signed the confidentiality agreement that I'm going to go over tonight. Then I will send you the applications in this secure webpage where you can review the applications. I will also send you sample interview questions, which you can do what you want. You can pitch them, you can say, "We'll use some of them", you can rewrite some of them, and you can ask some of them. But I was working on why use only questions that are more popular in interim superintendent position. I believe you have a fourth application coming in, but I haven't seen it yet. I do know it's been requested. So, that's the good news, is that you do have at least three completed applications in our office. So, when you're ready to move forward, you do have this training behind you, and you can do so in a timely manner. So, on the first page, you've got your main hiring requirements, your hiring requirements and guidelines. And you've got the three federal, the federal and state employment laws that are really referenced in your policies. You have the repeal Civil Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, or nationality. You have Title IX of the Education Amendments, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex. You have the law of work of the Rehabilitation Act. And then you have Title II of the American Disability Act, that prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. These are federal laws that we're required to follow, and they are part of your policies. So, this all dovetails with your policies. The three main laws, the internal selection process and your interview process is not, the Chapter 889 to promote equity of women for women in administrative positions. This was approved in 1980. And basically, this chapter requires job description review, criteria, a non-discriminatory hiring procedure, and a form of action plans. This was implemented in 1980. It does align with the rest of your policies. And I have put links to all of these, so if you want to dig in further. In this case, I'm the messenger, and I'm just right now bringing forward requirements for an equitable hiring process based on your policies that you have adopted. So, there's no opinion in this. It's just pretty much, this is your policy, and therefore, this is what you need to do moving forward. You also have Title 28, the personal records law. This basically requires that all the information be kept confidential relating to the applicants for employment, and confidential means forever. So, even next fall, when you start your full search, whenever you choose to do that, and maybe one of these applicants decides to apply for the full-time position, and maybe some of these applicants from the interim position, you can't even say, "Well, they were one of our applicants last time". You've got to remain confidential in this process forever. And it's important for the applicants and the candidates that they trust there is going to be confidentiality throughout the process. There may be people that are saying, "No, I'm interested in the match. I'm going to throw my line into the pond and see what happens", and, but they haven't told their board. They haven't told their board chair at another district, because they don't want that other district to think they're unhappy. They're just doing their research. They need to have the right and the flexibility to do that research and to look into the position in your school department without feeling as though it's going to be talked about and it might get back to a place where they don't want it to come back to. When I became, when I left the superintendency in the Booth Bay region to go into the executive director of the superintendent's station, I trusted that process would be confidential. I trusted I could research, I trusted I could do my homework, I trusted that I could look through the process. If I felt it was a match and I was off of the job, I could accept it. But I also knew it wasn't going to end up at home, because I wasn't unhappy. I was very happy, but I didn't want my board to think I was actively looking. So, please, act with the needs for confidentiality for the candidates that are looking at your district. The last main law that impacts this election process is Title 1. Basically, this requires superboards to meet in public when they're in the process. So, when are you going to meet? Even how many candidates are you going to interview? And however you will meet in executive session when deliberating on confidential matters. So, in the board interviews, the interns, the candidates for interim superintendent, you will probably have a quorum. That will mean you will go into executive session, and then you will conduct your interviews because you'll have that quorum. And then you'll come out, and when you're ready to make that decision, that will be done in public session. So, just remember that you do have the Freedom of Access laws to consider. So, you've got your federal law, Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act, Title 9 under the Education Amendments, Section 104, Title 2 of the American Disability Act. You've got Chapter 889. You've got Title 28, the Personal Records Law, and Title 1, Section 401, which is your Freedom of Access law. These laws are all tied into the policies, but you're all required to follow them. So, what I'm going to do is I'm simply going to highlight a couple of things in the next couple pages. The main part of education has a methods of administrative guidance. And what this does, it is, it requires districts to publish a notice of nondiscrimination on a continuing basis in a variety of different locations. This could be your handbook, this could be all your job applications, anything for employment, anything for admission. It could be in your posting notices and recruitment materials. You're required to post, basically, that it's intended to be a statement found on all official school communication and purposes to express the school's commitment to equitable access to education and employment opportunity, based on the federal and state laws that we just talked about. The minimum requirements is that will be nondiscrimination will include race, color, national origin, sex or discrimination in its educational programs and its employment practices. It also includes sexual orientation, this is defined in Chapter 5 of the Human Rights Act. And it also includes religion and ancestry. So, basically, schools are required by this main continuous notice of nondiscrimination to post the statement that you will adhere to not to discriminate on the basis of the protected classes and what's listed in Title 5 of the Human Rights Act in your hiring procedures and processes for any employment. Basically, it also says that schools may not engage in any employment practice that discriminates against the protected classes, and also the additions from the Human Rights Act, and that you must include the nondiscrimination policy within all informational documents associated with recruitment and employment, including your ads and applications, contracts, and handbooks. So, when we put your ad out for the interim superintendent, it did include a bit of nondiscrimination that goes from your policy. And it basically says that the Herman School Department will not discriminate at equal opportunity in employment providers. Well, this is that main, the main continuous notice of nondiscrimination. So, on page four, I'm jumping over, and please raise your hand for that question. But on page four, I'm hoping over to your policy AC. This is your nondiscriminational equal opportunity policy that you're required to follow, it is your policy. If you go down to the bottom of the page, you'll see the legal references, and you'll see the references that I mentioned in our state and federal laws that I mentioned at the very beginning. But the summary is that, and we did take this first sentence to put in your application, is that the Herman School Department does not discriminate on the basis of sex or other protected categories in its educational programs and activities as required by federal and state regulations in discrimination and harassment of school employees based on protected classes and genetic information are prohibited, and discrimination against and harassment of students of protected classes also are discriminated. And also, so this is your policy, that your equal opportunity and affirmative action policy. This was adopted, we folks, it was amended in November 2 of '20, so this is the most up-to-date version of this policy. Yep?
Eileen, I wanted to ask, when it references the affirmative action officer, is that yourself?
No, you have one in your district. Every district's required to have one.
Okay. And, okay.
And so, I'm not going to go into those sections, because those don't pertain to the hiring of your interim superintendent. The rest of the policy does talk about implementing a continuity program, designing red discrimination. So, there should be a program against applicants, employees, students, and other individuals. And the other thing, the school unit has a designated and authorized affirmative action officer or Title 9 coordinator. So, there should be that in your district, that any complaints for Title 9 or affirmative action will be going to that officer. So...
Okay.
So, the things that I'm going to highlight, so that I'm not here for two hours, are specifically focused on the hiring of your interim superintendent.
Can I just ask you one question, though? Because the job posting referenced the full year, and the committee had approved up to one year. So, do we just communicate that when we're in the interviews?
I believe the ad said up to one year.
Okay.
And I'll make sure, when I contact the candidates, I'll make sure it says up to one year.
Okay.
But I'm 99% sure we changed to up to one year.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep. So, moving on to page six is the next policy that I'm going to highlight as it pertains to the hiring of your interim superintendent. Your policy GCFB. This was reviewed July 11 of '22, and this is a very updated policy. However, it hasn't changed since you first adopted it in 2010. So, once again, in response to the Act to Promote Equity of Opportunity for Women Administration, which was a public law in 1990, Chapter 889, you affirm your commitment to the strict prohibition of discrimination in employment of the protected classes. So, that's your policy. So, this requires you to make sure that you're not discriminating against any of your candidates. And then moving on to page seven, which is your GCFBR, which is really your procedure policy. Once again, the opening statement says that procedures that you have designed to establish thorough practice for the recruitment and hiring of the most qualified candidates for administrative position. So, it requires a job description development review. So, we did go over your job description. We did include that in the ad that went out. We are recruiting right now. We did send out an ad in serving schools, school spring. It is posted on the MSMA website, and it went out to all superintendents and CTE coordinators, which would be your typical group of people that would be looking at this. We also sent that out to our interim list of retired superintendents that may be interested in looking at this. And I did people, and called some retired, recently retired superintendents who have expressed an interest to me in surveys and interim. So, I picked up the phone, I said, "Just so you know, we're just posted this position." So, that's what we do for recruiting interim superintendents. Screening will happen when you get the applications. You'll sit down, you'll take a look at them. I can provide a screening room for you to help guide that. The applications are not the huge comprehensive applications for a full-time superintendent. They're a little bit shortened. So, your screening will be basically reviewing the applications, looking at their resumes, reading their letters of recommendation, reading their opening letter of why they're interested. And then you'll begin to discuss which candidates you want to bring in for an interview. Once again, interviewing, I will send you a list of sample questions that you may want to ask your interim superintendent for you to determine which questions you may want to use. I certainly would recommend that you include questions that are really pertinent to Herman's School Department. I don't pretend to know that information. I don't pretend to provide you with that information. That needs to come from you. You'll obviously get to the point where you're going to select the candidate, and then you'll negotiate the contract with the candidate, and then determine their starting date. So, that is what the, really, the interim process is a very reduced process from the full search. So, all search will be much more comprehensive as you move forward. On page 10, though, I really want to stop and talk about confidentiality. To ensure the confidentiality, we maintain and permanently follow the hiring throughout the hiring process, all of our participants are, we must maintain absolute confidentiality of the candidates, including their names, in accord to state laws. So, this is not just, we're asking to do it. We are asking you to follow the law and remain confidentiality throughout the process. It means you don't talk to your neighbors about it. You don't pick up the phone and give that reference check. You don't pick up the phone and talk to anyone about it. That's my job. Reference check will be done by who you become on the board. I can send you reference check questions. But please make sure that you're not talking to other people about the candidates. Maine is a really small state, and it won't take very long for it to get out that people know who has applied and that type of thing. And I wouldn't want you to end up with a lawsuit. That's a headache you don't need. So, that's why we're doing this training tonight is to review the importance of confidentiality. The school committees to assume responsibility for superintendent or the school board for providing an adequate orientation at appropriate stages of the process on confidentiality. On the next page, on page 12, is your confidentiality agreement. So, basically, it appreciates your willingness to assist in the processes for bringing applicants to a selection of the superintendent of Herman's School Department. And the next part, I'm going to read, understanding the intent and seriousness of the legal requirement to maintain strict confidentiality is most important in regard to Title 28, Section 6101.2B of the main statute, reads in part that any information in any form relating to an employee or applicant for employment or to the employee's immediate family shall be kept confidential if it relates to the following: all information, working papers and examinations used in evaluation or examination of all applicants for employment. There has been one test case that's been substantiated, that even the name of the applicant, so if you have, we're just saying, to someone in your neighborhood, Eileen King applied for the interim position, that is protected information. Even something as simple as the name. Or something that associates that person with a job. Or the former superintendent's schools in the Booth Bay, Booth Bay Hall, or SBB. That would then define who that is. That is protected information. So, we just ask that, in order to avoid any kind of case, any challenge or breach of confidentiality, we ask that you maintain confidentiality. It is permanent. It applies to all unsuccessful candidates, as well as the successful candidate. Obviously, that becomes not an open information once they're hired. Therefore, in agreeing to participate in this undertaking, we expect you to acknowledge, having been provided with this orientation on the requirement of confidentiality, and that you are accepting the responsibility. If you choose to accept this responsibility, and you believe you can retain confidentiality, then you are required to sign the confidentiality agreement below and sign it and turn it in. We're asking that we have these by, I don't know if we put a date on this. What we're asking, today is Monday. We're asking that we have these in the superintendent's office by Wednesday. Now, there's two ways you can do it. At the very top of page 10, there is a blue link to the Survey Monkey. You can go on there, you can sign it, which you put your name, you click the box saying, "I agree", and then you submit. Or, I think Jody was going to have hard copies tonight to hand out to have you folks sign it there. So, we'll need them by Wednesday. I would recommend that, given that we're at the end of April, that you begin to seriously consider a date to interview. At least the three, maybe three if you want to interview three. You might look and say, "We only want it to be two", but the applications, the candidates, we already have in place. And then finally, the last part of this is confidentiality hiring process. Obviously, any breach of confidentiality can result in serious legal ramifications. This is page 12. Do not discuss the candidates with other members of the interview team unless you have come together to do so. So, please don't call your co-board members to talk about this. Conducting your own Google search or seeking information about the candidates is strictly prohibited, and it is a violation of confidentiality agreement. It is forever, not just during the hiring process. It's for all positions, and it includes the members of the candidate's family in case you have someone that's working in the district. And then, as you examine the documents virtually, which you will be given the opportunity to do through the secure webpage that we'll give you with a pass code, that should be done private. It should be out of view of your family members. Make sure that they don't have access to the emails and the information that are sent out to you regarding the candidates. And ensure that family members that are using the computer that you're using to review the application materials are not able to access the materials. And please keep all notes that you're taking secure at the very end of the process. There'll be a collection of the materials, your notes, the interview group work questions that will be used during your interview. Those will be collected, and they'll be stored according to the requirements to store confidential information. So, that's a really abbreviated confidentiality training. Any questions?
Yeah, so, Wednesday at the latest for us to have these doc, Wednesday at the latest for these documents to be turned in. At what point, then, you'll release them to us the next day? The application?
So, what I usually do is, what we need to do is we need to determine a date that you're going to interview. So, that's something you might want to do tonight, is say, "Okay, what are we going to interview, what time?". So, I need to have that idea. What I'll do is I'll release them to you several days before then. So, they're not just sitting around for weeks. So, if you're going to interview, I don't know, May, oh, hold on. You're going to interview, where are we right now? Let's say you interview, let's say you're going to interview next Monday, April 29. I'll release the documents to you probably Thursday to review, and you'll have them in a secure webpage. There are only three, so it won't take that long to review the documents. But then I need to know who you're going to interview. So, we need to talk about timing and calendars stuff.
Okay. Yeah, because we will need to interview them ideally in the same day.
You do want to interview whoever you select. You might select the three, you might select two, you might select one. But if you do, if you do more than one, you need to, you should do all three in the same day. And you can't have someone show up for one interview, like a work member can't participate in one interview, but not the other. They have to be there for all the interviews. So, that's why I recommend you do it in one day. So, if I give you the applications, let's say I give you the applications Wednesday, you let me know Friday, how many applicants? You're going to have to talk to each other. That's why this can't be done that quickly. You'll need to let me know who you're going to interview, and then I'll split up the interviews, and then I'll send you the questions. And I can go ahead and send you the sample questions tomorrow. I think I've got them all done, actually.
Fox?
But I would say you should try, probably try to interview by May 3 or May 6 at the latest, if you can.
May, April 29, what's everyone's thoughts? And what time would those normally start?
Depends on your schedule. So, what's the earliest where it can start? And then plan for an hour for each interview with a little break in between.
I would suggest, before we conduct the interviews, we have our own separate meeting in which we review our questions, and we discuss on who's going to ask which question, and what those ground rules are of how we're going to conduct the interviews.
Yeah, last time, so the questions all have to be asked of this applicant, all the same questions to be asked?
Yes, yes.
And so, you would send those questions out to us? And then, if anyone wants to add any? I mean, we'd have to have another meeting? Or we can do it by email like we did?
If it's going to be a quorum, I would recommend that the board get together, go into executive session. Obviously, the interview questions would be done in an executive session, so that you don't have, listen to what the questions are going to be. I would recommend you look at a meeting and screen the applications together. Have your laptops, sit down, go through the applications, determine who you want to interview, determine when you want to interview, determine what your questions are going to be, and then give me a call, and I'll schedule everything.
I think last time, we did the prep work individually, and then we met afterwards to discuss the candidates and any questions we had in the applications. But we spent time individually doing the screening, because some people take longer than others. And then we get together after we did that.
You did do it that way last time. But we're also, we were also looking like full search. But, so whatever you put aside, there's a couple of different ways to do it. I just need to know when to send you the applications, and then I need to know how many people you're going to interview, and then, and what your times are.
If we're doing meetings on Thursday, for, could we do an executive session at the end of that evening or before those start? Because we're meeting for sub, I think, subcommittees, and that way, we're already here that day. And then we could, as a group, meet and have the questions and the resumes and the plan for the interviews the following week?
We could interview, like plan a second or third, you have to tell. If we met on the 20, the 29th? I don't know, what's your calendar, Jessica?
June.
Which day, 29th or 30th?
29th would be better for me.
Yeah. So, if we were going to meet on the 29th to determine and have an executive session for our interview questions, and which candidates we were going to go forth with, that would still work for you to release them to us Thursday?
Yes, I can get them out to the 25th, yes. What I need from Jody is I need all the board members. First of all, they would have to have signed the confidentiality agreement to get the applications. So, I'll need to have a list of the board members who have signed the confidentiality agreement, and I'll need their emails sent to me, because they're going to, all this is going to be done via email. Keep in mind that it will be a secure webpage. It will not have printing, you will not be able to print, that will be disabled. So, we don't want copies of the applications hanging around. It will all be done electronically.
And then what would be a potential day for us to interview? May--
Also, if you're going to meet on the 29th to make that decision, I, I-- if they're available-- I mean, this is a short turnaround, it could be May 6th. May 6th would give the candidates a week.
That's our regular committee meeting day, but--
I don't think a Friday afternoon--
No.
--is a good time. I think Thursday is too soon. I could try to make it happen the second, but I--
No. So if we did the-- we did the 6th-- our meeting's at 6:30, I don't think that that's going to work again. 7th?
May 7th, I can try-- yeah, that would make sense. Yeah, because you're not going to call me until the 30th that Tuesday. So that's just, that's one week, that's perfect.
We could do it that Monday? For the board meeting again?
What time would you suggest? That's what I was trying to figure out. Because Monday would be better because it's considered a committee meeting.
Yeah, and then--
So if you needed--
If you needed an executive session, that would be beneficial to just put it all-- like if you interview during the day and then you--
What time would you suggest?
I don't know what day, so--
I mean, that Monday would theoretically-- if we did--
I mean-- I mean, we've got to assume that most of these folks are working, so--
Well, that's the first one.
It may be hard for them to get out of their job any time before 4 o'clock.
So, you know, I would-- I would recommend that you start-- I don't know, is it possible to start your interviews at 5:30?
No, I was thinking, I wanted to try at 4:00 or that's--
Do you think you could get through? No, I think it--
Could get through--
Yeah, it's going to depend on how many--
At least one hour per person at this level.
3, 5, 3, 4, 5, 6.
I'm available, so I guess I'll also have to look at candidates and who else is available.
It would be good just-- I would like to do it. I'm with you, I'd like to do it that day.
What day?
The 6th, but our regular committee meeting is at 6:30.
What about other board members that are working?
I have this--
Well, it would be-- it would be us four that are here that are working.
Okay. If that works with the four, then that, that could be nine. It depends on how many you interview. So you've got to look at-- you're going to plan on an hour interview. So if you start at 6, you want to be done by quarter up 6. So you need to back that up.
Yeah. I don't think that day's going to work, I mean--
I thought you mentioned May 7th as well.
We did, but I potentially have something then, but--
I am, but I don't think it's a good idea to try to--
Yeah, I think maybe-- May 9th, potentially?
Trying to run a regular meeting and have your interviews in front of it, it's just an informational overload.
Yeah, I mean, this is up to you. I don't, I don't-- I don't cover the interviews. I don't interview. This is her decision, I facilitate the process. So I just need to know when to send the applications and when to call the candidates.
Okay, so that, okay--
The 29th is a conflict for me currently. I don't think I can-- for us to need to go over the questions. If we have any chance, we could do it for the subcommittees around there. I'm not going to be here anyway, to the best of my knowledge.
If we did the 30th-- okay, if we did the 30th, do you still release them to us on Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. We'll do the 30th.
What time?
Um, what time? Do you want-- 6? We'll do 6 on the 30th. Yeah.
You're going to interview on the 30th?
No.
Okay.
The 30th will be when we determine who we're going to interview, and we'll let you-- I'll let you know the next day.
Okay. We will send out your applications to you on Wednesday. And please make sure that we have signed confidentiality agreements before we do that.
Yes, absolutely. And then I'll confirm for you the day that we're going to do the interviews to. I'll just--
Sure.
Because you have another--
Yeah, I'll just need to know the day and the time that you're thinking. Keep in mind an hour with a couple minutes in between. So when you start-- when you decide how many, then, then we'll schedule it that way.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Eileen. Any other questions for I mean?
We have three. Remember I was optimistic and someone went, oh, we're optimistic. We have three.
Possibly four.
I appreciate it. Possibly four, so, good.
Possibly four, I'm not sure about that. All right, everyone, have a great night and a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye-bye.
It's kind of-- it's kind of tight, but the 3rd-- did you say you were available or no?
Not for interviewing on Friday, I don't think. I mean, I'd like to, but--
I should have said it all should be done the same day.
Yeah. So potentially looking at May 9th? Or unless we felt like we wanted to do it on the 3rd, but I think that that could be tricky.
I will be available on the 9th.
You're available on the 9th, looking for May 9th? And then we could potentially do 4-- 4-- they were late, I think.
Yeah.
4, 6, 8. If there was 3.
4-- did we do last time? We did 4, like say 4 to 5?
At 15.
15, yeah.
Oh, so 5:30, 7. 4, 5:30, 7. All right, now we're going to move on to discussion of qualifications, characteristics, and expectations for the interim. I know that I asked everyone to send me their ideas, but we don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Did anyone wish to comment on that? Okay, public comment will be closed. Did anyone have any ideas?
I sent you everything.
A communication is definitely one that several of us agreed on. So I definitely think that making sure questions surrounding that-- I'd ask everybody to think about the questions that you want to start to ask. Because again, if we ask one candidate a question, we got to ask it all. And what we did last time is the questions would just be numbered. We'll just go right down the list and pick who's going to ask, and that person's going to ask best. Jesse, if he's assigned number one, and it was just random, we didn't pick who decided, because it's right there on the paper. We don't have to bury it. Jesse, you'll just ask question number one to everyone. Haley, you'll do the next one. Or however, but we all ask same amount of questions. If that makes sense. If you don't want to ask a question, by all means, just let me know. I know another important thing, of course, is there was one that talked about the students. So of course, that has got to-- it's got to be a priority. Passion of the students. The ones that people thought were important. I'm just going to remain on educational backgrounds. So typically, successful superintendents hold advanced degrees. That, that was more like for the full term. But when we look at the interim, I thought it was great resilience and calm under pressure. So interims may face heightened scrutiny and pressure due to the temporary nature of their role and the circumstances surrounding their appointment. So resilience and the ability to remain calm under pressure are essential qualities. So I loved that that one. Knowledge of district operations. So while the interims may not have the same level of institutional knowledge as permanent superintendents, they should have a solid understanding of district operations and be able to quickly familiarize themselves with key issues and challenges. Neutral and impartial leadership. You know, they must navigate the complexities of the district's policies and relationships while remaining impartial and focused on the best interests of the students and the district. I mean, that is so important. Stability and continuity. That they often step into roles during times of transition or crisis. So they must provide stability for the district while also preparing for the transition to a permanent, if applicable, and effective communication. Did anyone have anything else? I mean, these were ones that we got from the main school management. I know everybody has a copy of them. So as you're thinking about questions that are different from what Eileen has, just keep these in mind. Anything else? That anyone had, that they wanted to add?
I think Eileen was going to send-- I'm guessing you're giving Jody a list of interim questions?
Yeah, I think she's going to send them off to us tomorrow.
I'll dig up what we used last time to send them to you just so we have more questions occasionally.
So the plan will be Thursday at the latest. We'll get the documents from Eileen, we'll review them. We will meet-- what day did we say? Tuesday, the 30th at 6 o'clock.
For executive session.
That will have to be posted as a special meeting, Jody, please. With an agenda of an executive session. And then we will meet for executive session, decide who we're going to interview the next day. I'll let Eileen know the date. You know, confirm with her the day that it's May 9th, the times, and then she'll get back to us.
It will go over the questions that we'll ask in that meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Everybody will know which question they're assigned to. So as you get the questions, if they're one you're passionate about, sure. But just again, make sure that you're reading it from the form. We cannot alter. And if that first candidate gets asked a question, we got to ask it of all. And then we can't ask the second or third candidate a question that we didn't ask the first. So we've got to make sure that we've got those questions solved.
I got to stress that meeting on the 30th at 6. I think of it almost as a mini rehearsal for us.
Yeah, sure.
That this is the time, the preparation for an interview. The more we are prepared for a good interview, the better the interview will run and the better candidate we'll get. And it's not only a review of the questions, but it's also a review of the-- she mentioned the rubric. But what we expect as an interview committee, and what we expect as positive answers and negative answers. So that we all agree on what-- when we have that question, what we are looking for as a general. I realize we won't all agree on the exact answer, but we're, what we are looking for in general considerations when we ask a specific question. And just whenever I've been involved in these, the more prepared and short of the term rehearsed we are from how we're setting up the interview process, to how the tables will be set up, to who's asking what question, to what the expected outcome is. The better we are prepared for that, the better the entire interview process will look.
Do you think we have these at the superintendent's office where do you do that?
It's funny you say that, I was just thinking of that. So normally, the whole committee is not part of the hiring committee, but I wanted everybody to have the option to do it. And I do think that the superintendent's office, Jody, if it was available, would be a good option for us to do that.
We could do that. The only other, other thing I'll throw out there, we did it at Morgan Hill one year. And we did it there because we wanted to keep who was applying confidential.
Hmm, that's true.
So if they see people going in the superintendent's office, they're going to know that they're-- or assume that they're applying.
It's tricky. I know. That's the only thing about having the whole committee department. I don't know what that is between--
What do you mean by that? I'm confused.
Ah, because it's a forum. So we have to-- it's a meeting that we're supposed-- we have to have public comment, all that. So normally, if it's not a meeting, people might not necessarily know what they were interviewing, right? We have to keep the candidates confidential. So I mean--
You don't count it as a forum, right? Is that the answer? The chairs that you wouldn't count what's for?
No, it's a, it's a forum. So we have to publish this meeting as a special meeting.
No, no, we're talking about the interview, it's not--
Yep. And so are those three of us present?
We, I think we could still do that. I'm not saying that we have to do it.
No, I think we do it here because there's more going on here.
I mean, just because we go into executive session doesn't mean we can't move to an application.
I thought about that.
So we can open the meeting, have public comment, move to executive session, and I mean, we could, we could start the meeting at 8:00 in the morning. And there's no time limit there. And I'm saying 8:00 as an example, but we can get together, three of us can get together and open the, the school committee meeting, allow for public comment, and then move into executive session. We have a time in which we're going to need to do the private interviews, and then we all come back together for the--
I like that.
We could. We could have applicants also come through a door that's not in the hundreds.
Yeah. I've just not done that before, Jim.
It's not really conducting public business when you're doing an interview, though. You're not--
There's three people present.
Have you run that through the attorney?
Absolutely.
She mentioned it too. She didn't mention that on the education-- There's reasonable ways around it.
Yeah, no. So we will have-- the public can meet here and then--
We can--
We could always potentially do it over Zoom so that person isn't--
I guess offered, but-- We can determine that because we have to be in public, yeah. Yeah, to be determined on whether we do it, but we'll meet here. Any other questions that anyone has?
I, I, I think I sent this to you in email. And I sent it down the road, but she actually linked it. The current position description, I think we do need to take a look at that sooner than later because there are certain things stated in there that need to be updated. I don't see-- there isn't a problem with the current description, but there's things in there that do need to be updated. It references a vision and a strategic plan, and we don't have a current vision and strategic plan. There's some other things in there that just need to be tightened up. So if we're going to have, if we're going to have that as a link on the job vacancies, then we need to make sure that the link is to a good, good one. And I, I printed off a copy of the vacancy that's posted, and it does list a superintendent for the year, for the 2024-2025 school year. Which, as you mentioned-- so I just think that needs to be addressed when we do the interviews. We'll look at the actual timeframe.
Yeah, she can even too, when she sets them up, yes. Anything else?
Policy review. Do we need to look at policy G S F B R in accordance with G C F B? It might not be needed for the interim selection, but G C F B states that we will review the policies prior to the hiring of a superintendent.
I agree with you. They should all be one. Yeah.
So if that could be put on the policy agenda--
Yeah.
The agenda for the policy committee so that they can take a quick look at that, or look at that, make sure that it's all up to date, and then we can, then we can go look at it.
I don't hope it will be on for next week, but I--
Yep.
I think what she said was it was up to date based on-- it met the criteria for the statutes.
It, it met the criteria, yes. But the policy also states that we need to review it prior to posting, doing the interviews. So just to be able to do that. And then another thing that I don't think really needs to be discussed, but something that I think we should just, you know, give each other the nod that we've reviewed it, and that's policy A C A B dash R, which is the-- if you have a complaint over any of the civil rights requirements, those sort of-- the complaint procedure, so that we're at least familiar with that. I don't think it needs to be, be discussed in a meeting because there's really nothing there to discuss. But I think as a committee, we at least need to be familiar with that in case something of that nature should crop up.
I agree with you. Updating them all at once is good.
In a former life, I used to work HR, so I know these things can really come up and invite us, so--
Absolutely.
And if we could get a copy of the affirmative action plan. I see the policy, do we have a plan?[1778.51] Mention's a plan. And if we don't have-
That's for the permanent one, right?
Yep.
Anything else? Open it up to the public one more time?
Just a couple things, I've done this twice. We made a mistake on the first one. We had one of our interviewers come in and run into the other person going out. So we always made an hour and a half to make sure that somebody had a half hour to clear before the other person come in and out. Some of your people may not care if they, but they still, the other person might feel uncomfortable if they run into them. Another thing is I got a meeting place if you guys need one, in secret, so.
Yeah.
Let me know. I just can do it for you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else? All right, we will adjourn at 6:00.